We're called to order the meeting of the school committee on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And as this meeting is being broadcast live on DCAT. At this time, I'd like to ask if anybody out there is recording. Okay, without that being said, will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Danvers Public Schools, a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. Again, we were broadcasting on Danvers Community Access Television. And we've already gone through that piece, so tonight, as we had an election, we have two new members coming aboard. I'm leading the meeting until we determine a chair. So at this point, I would like to open up to the committee to bring to order a motion for the next chair of the school committee.
I nominate Gabe Lopes.
I would second that nomination.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, I think Gabe's a wonderful addition to the to the chair. He's brings a lot of leadership qualities. He's been a collaborative partner over the years, and I would support him fully as chair.
All right, let this time, let's.
Thank you, Josh.
At this time, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Gabe Lopes being the chair of the school committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Lopes, the meeting is yours. I already have notes for you.
Thank you, thank you for the vote, thank you for the confidence of the board, and just want to let the community know, I'll do the best I can. And thank you, Eric, for the nomination, appreciate it. As a first act, as the school committee chair, I'd like to ask for a nomination for secretary.
I'd like to nominate Eric Crane for secretary.
I'll second it.
Any comments or discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. Do we vote or?
We can vote. It doesn't have to be a roll call, it's just to say all those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed?
None.
None, Eric.
Thank you.
All right, keep you close. Items of interest to the superintendent, school committee, and community? I believe the HRC is coming up first.
Mr. Pollack?
Mr. Pollack?
Congratulations, Mr. Chair, and thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee. As you all recall, last January, at the MLK Celebration Event. We had some projects that we decided we were going to do and try to endeavor in during the whole three to four hour event. One of them was to develop a banner that was to illustrate the theme of that event, which was not only MLK Day, but Move Like King. Move Like King, MLK. And Jeff Soret, from the art department, art teacher, developed and sketched out the banner. And the participants, those that painted in the banner, were schoolchildren, guests, teachers, administrators, anybody, anybody from in the town. I have it here, if at the end you want me to just show it, I'll need someone to just help me unroll. It's not that large, it's sixty inches by twenty-nine and a half. But what we plan to do is we planned with permission of each department, or the town, the school committee, et cetera, and the superintendent, all the way up and down. Those people that are role players and participants in the in the community, including churches, places of worship, businesses. We'll develop a schedule, and we're not sure how long you can have the banner, maybe a week, two weeks, couple of days. I'm sure it'll be that amount of time at least. And the police department is going to be responsible for moving this very light banner around from place to place and hanging it. I'm not sure, there may be some children in here that even took part in that event. But we're going to bring it to any town property, all the schools if they would like it, police, fire, library, and like I said, places of worship, et cetera. Now, I don't think there are any other members of our committee here, but they did a great job setting this up. I had absolutely nothing to do with the artwork, obviously, but it's really, it's really a nice piece of work, and I think that any institution within the town would be proud to hang this for a certain number of days. Before I step down, I want to thank all the members of the school committee, the administration, and especially Mary Wermers. The principal of the school is always back here somewhere, Adam. We just get tremendous cooperation from everybody. I mean, this is not an HRC event when we have it in January. It is an HRC event slash Danvers Public Schools event slash anybody else who wants to take part in it. So it really is truly a community effort, that's it. And so you guys decide what you want to do, you ladies and gentlemen, but you decide what you want to do. However, the only thing we were asking, if you would, if you would agree, we'd like to have it displayed this year at the high school throughout the end, to the end of the year, through graduation, or whatever, write down. Because this is, this is where it came from, okay? That's all I have to say, I'll answer any questions, and if not, I'll get someone to help me. I'll tell you, I'll just ask Mary to help me, she helps me with everything else when it comes to this program, okay? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you seen this, Mary? It's really beautiful.
That's great. Absolutely, yes.
It's going to travel around a little bit, otherwise I'd leave it here, but it's going to, I think, to the library board and other places before we hang it. But as soon as we get it back, we'll get it to you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you so much. Next up, we have our representative from CPAC, Jen Corcino.
Good evening, welcome new members, I'm excited to bring all of your new ideas and excited to meet you guys here in person, so welcome. Jen Corcino, I am now part of the Board of Danvers CPAC, which, those of you who don't know, is Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and we cover the entire district. So welcome, excited to work with you guys. Also, just kind of wanted to let you guys know that we also welcomed some board members this past month. So we do have now, I'm just going to kind of go through briefly, we still have Suzie as our chair, Suzie Soldani. We have Amanda Daniels as our secretary, she now has a co-secretary, Daniel Duff, so we're excited to work with her. She brings a lot of different new initiatives and ideas to our team. We also have myself now, part of Ripo, it is a resource inclusion program organizer. And I also have a co-person as well with me, and that is Daniel Palma. And together, we both kind of work on gathering different resources for everybody within special education program. Also, you know, pushing inclusion opportunities throughout the town and the school district. And we also work with creating different programs and working to kind of just organize everything so that we can get information to the parents and vice versa. Getting the parents to the right people within the school system, within the town, and within multiple different types of resources in which they need, from, you know, autism to physical disabilities, the gamut. And so that's kind of our role, which is a different and new role name, but for short, it's Ripo. We also have a community leader, who is Julie Di Filippo, and she will be working with a lot of the town committee members and trying to help us really spearhead a lot of the collaboration between the school committee, the CPAC committee, all of the different leadership and administrative roles within the school, school department and the town. So that's really her role, she'll be the liaison with trying to facilitate that. So we're all extremely excited, they bring so many new ideas. Julie is also going to be working on a strategic plan, and we have asked the community in the weekly, yes, we do the weekly emails, the little blurbs in the emails that go out from the superintendent. So it's usually scroll all the way down to the bottom, and they're CPAC. And so we do send everything out weekly, we try to update everything as quickly as possible, getting that information out to our family members and the community members. We do have two current Google Docs, what do you call it, surveys, sorry, mine slipped there for a second. So we have two surveys, one for strategic planning, so we'd love to hear from the families of the town to see what they would love for us to work on for the next year. We have one, one three and five year plan that we're kind of working on, of course, we want to work on the first year first, and we have a lot of different initiatives. We also started planning, our monthly meetings are going to be all virtual, we will plan some in-person meetings as well, but it's really hard for us to find, you know, people to watch our kids. So we do have them virtually, and they're going to be every Monday, we meet first, just like, I want to say there, don't quote me, but I want to say there about six thirty, seven o'clock. But there again, they'll all be announced, but they meet every Monday night, and they'll also be opened up to, to the community, and the link will be in, same thing, all the communication will either be on our Facebook page or through the weekly blurbs that we send out with the superintendent. Another exciting news, which I'm really excited for, is our, we have been doing forums once a month, that Superintendent Bauer has been spearheading with us and collaborating, it's been amazing, we've had a lot of really great feedback. And this month is going to be meeting our new district, I'm sorry, Director of Student Services, Christina Ryan. So really excited to kind of Q and A her, so if anybody has any questions or wants to tune in, the link for that, again, will be in the weekly updates. But that will be, I want to say is the last Thursday of this month. It's usually roughly six thirty, that's kind of that perfect timeframe for all the family members to tune in, and that is also virtual. And that's all of my updates, do you guys have any questions for me?
I just want to say, it sounds like a really exciting year coming up for your organization, and thank you for doing what you're doing, and to the other members of the board. And yeah, it looks very exciting, and congratulations on what you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, welcome.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, Julia, is this the last run? You'll be here next year, okay, all right, all right.
Um, I have a few things, a few little updates. During April break, there's numerous school trips, where we went out of the country. There was one to London, Paris, there was one to Italy and Greece, and there was another one to Peru. I can't speak on the other ones, but I went to London, Paris, it was a lot of fun, like, really cool to see, and be there with like friends and teachers, it was a blast, we had a lot of fun. The seniors are, they're officially out of school. No Lily. They're all on their internships, we're also fully into AP Week, so like the second week, a lot of people have already taken most of their exams, there's a couple more left, I know I have one tomorrow morning, but we're almost done with that. DECA, I know they're in the audience, but DECA was in Anaheim, California at the end of April for the ICDC competition. And I know that there was one team that placed top sixteen, they're in the audience, Baby Sharks, but yeah, that's what I have.
Any questions? Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We do have some items under the reorganization that we probably should take care of today.
Okay, is, would that be after public comments?
I'm sorry?
Do we want to do public comments first?
If you'd like to, sure, you're the chair.
Yeah, let's, why don't we go through public comments first? Like to open it up for public comment from the community, we do ask that you limit it to three minutes. Oh, I see one. Sure, please do.
Oh my goodness, I never get nervous. My name's Tracy Heron, I'm a parent of an eighth grader here at the middle school. Actually, before I start, I would just like to ask everybody in the audience that's here for the theater program to stand up, including parents. We're here to advocate for the continuation of the theater program within the middle school. Not only has it been incredibly rewarding watching the productions, it's been incredibly rewarding watching the children thrive. Not only from my daughter, but her friends, it's amazing watching what these children can do, and we all know middle school is one of the hardest times of your life. It's the transition between childhood and adolescence, and giving these children the opportunity and the outlet to explore what the talents are as they find out what their gift is. I think it's incredible for, if we could continue that, and we just want to advocate, I believe Brooke's here as well. Brooke, do you want to come and join me for a second? So Brooke's one of the alumnus that we've witnessed personally, actually participated in all the theater productions, and she's amazing. And I know that she's here to help us talk to you about continuing the program at the school, and if there's anything we can do or anything you need to hear from us to help facilitate that, we would really appreciate that. So if you have any questions of us, that would be terrific.
Any comments, questions?
I have a question, is this in regards to extracurricular or a class?
The actual class that actually takes place during the school year, sometimes not everything is quantitative, sometimes things are qualitative, and the quality and the outcome substantiates the actual inclusion of this program. So we would really like to be considered that it actually continues on behalf of all these amazingly talented children that didn't know they were talented until they actually participated in this opportunity. So we would really like to, we're all here advocating for that, as you saw from the numbers behind me, we're all supporting this program.
Thank you.
I do see that we have an update on this later on. Performing arts? Yeah, performing arts, yeah, and I think we'll address it shortly, but it is on the agenda, we can, we can open up for comments again after that, if that's okay, but thank you so much, we do want to support the arts, so really appreciate everyone coming out.
You want to do the?
Are there, oh, are there any other public comments, anyone else? Oh, no, you have to come up to the mic, please, thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
So Ms. Linquada also teaches public speaking, and I feel like in order to be successful in business or anywhere in life, you need to be able to communicate. So that goes along with the theater program.
And you are?
Amber Jo.
Thank you. And we have another. And please say your name when you come up, thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Vittoria, I'm also a theater mom. I am a mom to an eighth grader who's going to kill me for coming up here, but I wanted to just come up here and actually brag about the children that just knocked it out of the park two weeks ago. They participate, I don't know if anybody knows this, but they participated in a competition called Drama Fest, yes, two weeks ago. It was an all-day affair, middle schools from all over came and competed. They performed a forty-minute show, staff, it wasn't just performers, it was also crew, and they all came together with the help of Ms. Linquada, our amazing drama teacher. Who put in countless hours with these kids, I mean, every day after school practicing from like after school till four, five, six o'clock. Saturday practices all day, spending all this time training these children to perform, and the whole crew, the sound, everything, it was just so impressive what they came together and did. And they came home with the gold, I am proud to say. All these kids. The highest honor, gold, they came home with gold. Also, a small group of actors in the show, within the show, is called Hallmark of Horrors, just to fill you in. A small group of children also won the, what was the award, I'm sorry, I'm having a mind. Ensemble Award, my son was, my son being one of those students that got an award for participating. They got an award for the best ensemble in Drama Fest, which was a huge accomplishment. And our, our crew also came home with some awards as well, so it was just like this huge combination of talent coming together on that day. And I just, I wanted to point that out, I just, it's just, to me, it's a shame if this program doesn't continue, and we lose our amazing drama teacher, who's so dedicated and has such a great rapport with these kids. So thank you for listening, thank you for your time, I hope you understand our frustration with possibly losing this class and our beloved teacher.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zuri John-Gorio, and I'm here to talk about public speaking, the class. I'm an eighth grader moving up to the high school, and I wanted to tell you why I'm here tonight. First of all, I might not have been here, able to stand in front of all of you if I hadn't been in Ms. Linquada's public speaking class. I might not have been able to stand on that very stage and deliver a role, a lead role performance that I'm very proud of. The class Ms. Linquada taught had such a large impact on my confidence, and she had taught me how to present myself in a way that I have never known before. These are things that don't always come naturally to kids, and often need to be taught in a structured environment. I just wanted to say that taking the class away will greatly impact the students of Danvers, and I hope you'll reconsider removing the position, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ms. Linquada, Jessica Linquada, I'm the actual drama teacher. I was hemming and hawing about coming today and speaking, I didn't know what this would look like on my behalf, but I did know that I had a lot of parents and students coming, and I wanted to come and show my support. But I also wanted to speak on behalf of the class. The children have been told that the after-school program will absolutely continue, and for me, that's, that's interesting. It's an interesting concept, because it's a lot of hours that people put in to do the after-school program. But it's not what they get out of the class, and I explain it like this, I can be a physical education teacher, and I'm going to teach you physical activities, I'm going to teach you a little bit about track and softball and soccer, badminton, and I'm going to teach you all these little skills of all these other things. And then after school, I'm going to go and be a track coach, because that's my expertise. That is how, that is how the class and the after-school are different, it's not the same. I also have to form trust with every single student that walks into my classroom. There are no desks in my classroom, there are only chairs. I do not use technology except for script writing or research on a character. They are not in front of Chromebooks for all forty, fifty minutes of class. If you walk by my classroom, it sounds very loud and chaotic, but it's kids getting up and being creative. They are not as creative as we were when we were younger. They don't have that resilience, they do not have creativity. So when you ask a child to create a character, and they say to you, well, like what, like an emoji? My heart breaks, but they're serious, and that's a serious answer from a lot of these kids. My job is to open up the right side of their brain, we focus so much on cognitive learning and math and science, which is all very important. But you need creativity, you need to know how to access that right side of your brain. And it also teaches you how to work through problems, it teaches you how to communicate, which is another huge issue that we have with our kids today. They don't know how to communicate well. They have to learn how to get up in front of people and be uncomfortable, ugh, they freak out, you have to know how to do those things, it's important. The arts get dismissed, and we're always the first to go, because we might not have data points, or we might not have math, you know, test scores or whatever to go off of. But it's not about the data. But it's not about the data, it's about what they're taking out of it. And if you ask any student that's taken my class, they will tell you that they've come out of there more confident, more grounded, and have a better understanding. Lastly, Danvers Public Schools, from elementary to high school, the only place that your children are exposed to public speaking and dramatic arts is in middle school in this one class. And it was told to me that, well, not every student takes this class, correct. It was also said, it's, it's not a trajectory course, so they're not going to need it when they go to high school. But you're wiping away something that some of these kids didn't even know they needed. I deal with behavioral kids, I have two autistic children myself. I know the need for special needs in special education, I understand that and I am on board with that. But when you put my son, autistic son, in a room with neurodiverse and neurotypical children, it puts him on an equal playing field because everybody gets up there and everybody has that same fear. What am I going to do, how is this going to work? It puts people on an equal playing field. And I can take anyone into my class and get them to express themselves however they can. So I please, not just because it's my job. I just ask that you consider this to stay in our schools because it's important. Thank you.
I'm Liliana Tucker.
I'm Brian Callahan.
We are speaking later about the drama program, but I would, we would also have a few things to say right now about the class specifically. I personally, I might have not had her class, but Ms. Linquada, even though I didn't have her class, like just, like her ways of teaching people things is different than I've seen from any other teacher. And it helps me get more out of my comfort zone than I've ever felt. It helped me get on stage and portray, portray a character that maybe might have been weird, big, bold, something that I'm not used to doing, but she gave me the courage to step up there and do it. And, you know, I spend a lot of time with Ms. Linquada because I like her. And even, I spend rides with her sometimes, and she'll help me talk about drama. She'll, she'll help me with my acting, she'll help me have, she'll help me be braver and have more of the ability to speak like this specifically. Because personally, if I never had Ms. Linquada or talked to her or even met her, I don't think I'd be able to come up here and speak about this issue right now. I think I would be still at home, sitting there, being sad because the class is being taken away. And if, you know, if she wasn't here, then I don't think I'd be able to even step up there and have the courage to do what I did in Matilda and to do what I did at Drama Fest and to do what I'm doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm speaking about the classes during the day also. And that, how they're important because my dad speaks in front of judges because he's a lawyer, and he speaks in front of judges every day. And he'll speak, any job, you have to know how to speak in front of people. Because if you're a boss of somebody, if you're a boss of someplace, somebody, some shop or whatever, you're, you have to know how to speak in front of crowds. And if I didn't have Ms. Linquada's class, I wouldn't be here today. I wouldn't have got Mr. Warwick in the musical. I wouldn't have, we wouldn't have taken home the gold medal in Drama Fest if we didn't have Ms. Linquada. Because she put in that many hours of dedication to help us and get us real good. She didn't want a bad musical, she wanted it to be good. She wanted us, she wanted the best for us. Because she knows that if she's not here next year and they don't continue the drama program, that she's not sure Drama Fest would continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jason Tucker. So I am a sophomore at the high school. And I'm also the full-time a cappella sound engineer. And earlier this, this school year, during about February, I got to come here and run sound for the middle school musical, Matilda Junior. And I just want, I wanted to say that this is the most lively group of middle schoolers that I've ever seen. They're very active, they pursue their own interests, they are curious about everything. And it's great, but they get it from these, these classes. Because math is great, but it's very this, this, that. Like, there's always a right answer. In these classes, there's not, and it gives them the freedom to make their own right answer. And I got to see them go up on stage, I got to see them when they were out of costume. They were always talking, very lively, very chatty. And in some cases, that's bad, but in this case, that's great. Because it means they're comfortable with each other, they're comfortable with their peers, and most importantly, they're comfortable with their teachers and being out in the open. And I just wanted to say it's a great program, and I would hope it continues in the future.
Thank you.
Hi.
Pull the mic down, yeah, there you go. Don't be shy.
I'm here to speak about the drama class.
Can you please share your name and your grade, please, if that's okay?
Um, my name's Julia Osgood, I'm in sixth grade. And I don't, I wanted to try something new. I was kind of a really shy kid coming into drama class. It was trimester two, so kind of the middle of the year. And I didn't know anybody in that class. I didn't know anybody and I was scared. But when I got up on that stage, I forgot about everything and I just focused on me. And I knew that it was meant to be, that I would always love the stage. I did not expect to get like a really big role in Matilda. And when I did, I was really excited. Everybody in my family was thrilled for me, and I did not expect to take home one of the gold medals at Drama Fest. And it was really exciting, and I think it was a good experience. In drama class, in trimester two, Ms. Linquada was the best. She would always help us with everything, and she would always make sure you're okay.
Hi, my name is Sean Callahan, and I'm in sixth grade. And I'm also here to talk about the drama program. So like art kids get art and media kids get media and physical education kids get gym and like, yeah, you know what I mean? And, um, and we, like drama kids, next year, if you guys take this away, we're not going to have, we're not going to get what we want. And then the other kids get what they want, like, I don't just think that's fair. Like, when I went to, when I had drama class, like Ms. Linquada was like, she was willing to help us with anything that we needed help with. Or just like if we had a problem, like we could go to her and she would just like assess the situation and make it better.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, well, thank you all for your comments, and we'll definitely address it and have more commentary once we get up to the agenda item. But next up on the agenda, someone wants to make a motion regarding the lawyer?
Yeah, normally what we would do as part of the agenda at our reorganization meeting is to appoint the school attorney. So I would make a motion that we appoint Roseanne DePietro to continue as our school attorney.
Second. Any comments?
Roseanne's been with us a number of years, does a good job working closely with us in terms of our teacher negotiations. And I just think especially at this time, we need to continue with the path we're on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? It passes.
Uh, let's see, the other thing that we need is to request that the superintendent check the school committee's liability insurance. And so that would be for you to do, sir. And then establish a time, place, and regular meeting date for this year going forward.
Yeah, I'd like to, I think I'd like to table that for the next meeting, but I think we'll have some internal communications. This past year, we've gone with two sessions, one live, one in person. And we're just going to take another look at that and see if we can streamline things just a little bit. So we'll hold that vote, so we'll push that up.
Good. I think other than a signatory, because I think Alice or?
Yeah, we need a new signatory, once a week at the high school to sign over payroll and other documents. Anyone want to do that?
Yeah, I volunteer my services on that one, that sounds good.
All right, fantastic, Janet, you got that? All right.
It has a secondary, maybe, Mike, I saw his hand there.
Sure. Awesome.
The only other thing, let me see, what else do we have? Subcommittees usually can wait to the next meeting. Just while we're on the subject, welcome Mike and Sean to the school committee. And they're going to look forward to working with you. Congratulations to Mike Bean and Dee Joko for their election to the select board. And thank you to Gardner Truss for eighteen years of service. That is, that's a long time and a lot of town service, so that's my item of interest right there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any other items of interest from the school committee? Now, I also echo, welcome aboard, gentlemen. It's going to be a pleasure to work with you. Awesome. And now we'll move on to information, I'm sorry, items of interest from the superintendent?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Okay, awesome.
All right.
We have a number of different things to cover tonight. We have our Danvers High School pride, and we see our DECA members, as well as some commendations by Principal Federico from the high school. We have a bubble day presentation, performing arts update, I moved that up on the agenda. And then we have the, I'll provide an information update on my evaluation, as well as an update on the entry plan. And then everybody's favorite topic, the last day of school, so. We're going to begin with Principal Federico and his team. Giving a shout out to the great Danvers High School. Thank you, Principal Federico.
I used to not need these classes for these presentations, but. So first, before I bring up DECA, I just wanted to first congratulate Mr. Shannon and Ms. Doherty on their joining the school committee. Before we bring up DECA, I wanted to also share just another example of how Danvers High School students continue to expand their horizons beyond our local community. So tonight, I'm very excited to share that we have three students and a teacher who will be off to France early in June. We're really proud that they were the first ever winners of the French-American Friendship Contest sponsored by the Consulate General of France in Boston. So they're going to be heading to Normandy for the eightieth anniversary of the landings at D-Day. And they were asked to reflect upon French-American relations through a creation of a work of art. So junior Kenzie Rourke and sophomores Josie Vogel and Brennan Newton worked together to create a project, which was then selected to move on to the next phase of the contest where they had to interview in French. So they study French at the high school. And this committee included the Consul General of France on that committee. And their project, which depicted the Statue of Liberty, which if you're a historian, you know France sent to us as a gift, was one of the three winners from all the finalists. So they, they, along with Ms. Webenson, Madame Webenson, will be heading to France the first week of June for this event. And next week, will be attending a ceremony at the French consulate in Boston, which I didn't even know existed. So just another great example of how our kids continue to push past, you know, our local, our local community. Another example is our DECA program. So they're here tonight, so I'm very pleased to bring up Ms. Meg Sims, who's our DECA advisor, who's going to introduce our DECA students who are out in California. And as always, they did a great job representing our community in the international competition. So come on up, you can introduce the kids that are here, and I'll leave it over to you.
Thank you, come on over. We have some medals. I will go through this quickly as I think we have a lot of young people here tonight that have a lot to say, including my own. So I just want to take you through quickly, we have so much support from the school committee for DECA. And one of the, my favorite annual traditions is to come back here and tell you some of the things that we accomplished this year. So I'm going to go quickly through the slides, if you're ready. So this year, is it on yours? So if you want to flip to the first slide, this is our group. We've been, this is my official twentieth year of being a DECA advisor since we started the program here. And since 2016, at the international level, we've had twenty-one finalist projects. That's actually twenty-two finalist projects, I didn't update that one. Eleven top-ten ICDC winners and seven glass winners. So this year, in our program, we had two-hundred-and-twenty-eight students that competed at our district competition, which is obviously a very large population of the high school. At that, the two, the students who finished in the top seven moved on to our state conference, which was held in Boston in March. And we had one of the largest groups at the entire state conference with a hundred-and-forty DHS students competing. At that conference, if they place in the top five, they move on. And we had forty-five students compete at the international competition in Anaheim that was held two, two weeks ago. So to quickly give you a background, on the next slide, one of the big things we do is we like to work with businesses in the community. This year's topic, oop, I think you went one too far, or did I miss one? Oh, maybe we missed one. Was to, yep, you can keep going, was to work with businesses in the community for different project management projects. So we worked this year with a business solutions project, we worked with Griffin's Gift, we worked with a local dunks to work on some recycling, we worked with Inclusion Sports, we worked with Rock the Spectrum. And these students worked with the business to actually help implement some business solutions, whether it's marketing, promotion, and they actually incorporate whatever it is that they're working on. They create key metrics, they have to evaluate it at the end. So then the next one was the career development, which I have a group here to quickly talk about their project, which was known as Shark Tank. So a lot of you probably were exposed to Shark Tank at some point this year. We had, actually, I'm going to let them step up, introduce themselves, and tell you about their project. You got this.
Hi, I'm Andrea Gaudino.
Hello, my name's Molly Godfrey.
Hi, I'm Lucas Landry.
And we were the three project managers of baby sharks. So we worked at all five of the Danvers elementary schools, and we held a le, six weeks' worth of lessons on career development content, forty-five minutes before the school day started. So we went to each of the schools from seven forty-five to eight twenty. And we ended up holding five individual school competitions and then a final baby shark competition, which was here at the, in the NPR with two groups from the top, the top, wait, two groups. Two groups from each of the elementary schools, and they all competed here, the top ten groups.
So we'll get back to them in a minute. We also, one of our big goals as a DECA chapter is we like to do a lot with the community. So we had some other career development projects where we ran a business fair for Smith School. We had a career fair held at Riverside. And we worked to start, and we're going to continue building a relationship with the middle school, building a school store, and actually, we're going to be running. A group of eighth graders have already signed up to start a DECA program introduction. We're calling it Emerging Leaders for the eighth graders, next year's eighth graders at the middle school. We also like to do operations research projects where we work with a business to look at a different area. This year was about the recruiting, the hiring, the onboarding, and the retaining of employees. So they're taking a complex, real-world problem, they're working with a business, and at the end, they create a strategic plan. Locally, we worked with the ARC, we worked with Brookline Bank, Bill and Bob's, Soul Physical Therapy, and the list you can see up there. It's really important to teach the students that we're giving back and using the business knowledge that they're learning in these real-life applications with businesses. The next two sections, we did community awareness projects, we worked with Morgan's Message. We had people that were working to partner people up with volunteer organizations. And we had a student that actually presented to the Transportation Committee at the State House about getting new legislation around wearing helmets with motorized electric vehicles, so all the new vehicles. For community giving projects, we worked with Katie's Closet, we're going to continue that next year, Hoops for Troops, and Rock Out for Good, which was a student organized a Battle of the Bands at Chiante in Beverly, where students came out and supported local causes. Then we worked with, the next one, financial literacy, you might have seen the Credit for Life. You might have seen the Credit for Life group that worked with the bank to put on Credit for Life for our senior class. We worked with Thorpe School to teach the third graders some basics of investing and some other financial concepts. Then finally, one more, a sales project, which some of you have may, may have seen my bunnies running around your lawns, putting in their Easter eggs. We also did things like decorate for Halloween, and we added some inclusion events. We worked with the town inclusion to really expand upon some of our activities so kids could work together. So now finally, oh, my mouth is so dry, sorry. What happened this year at international? Well, we had forty-five students compete, forty in various categories, and five attended Leadership's Academy. Of all the twenty-three thousand people that were there, this team in front of you, you can see they're wearing their hardware, made the finals, which means the top sixteen in the world. They went on to recompete, and they placed sixth out of all teams in the world in the Career Development Conference. So we had a very successful year. They've been extraordinary based on their willingness to give back and what we've been able to do in the community. So we're very excited for next year. We have a great group of freshmen hopefully coming in, ready to take this on, and now if you have any questions for them.
I don't have a question, I'll just have a comment, because that was one of the, all the classes are enjoyable. When I visited the high school with Mr. Bowers, your classroom, the intensity, the focus, it seemed like the kids were really committed, and the results speak for themselves. So kudos to you and the whole team. It's, it's great to see, you know, Danvers kids going global and coming back with medals, so congratulations.
Just remarkable. I don't know what other words to say besides the way this program has grown, the number of students it touches, Megan and all of you, just absolutely remarkable, and congratulations.
Just to add, Megan, it's always great to see what you've built and the success that you've had, and congrats to you and the, and the students also. But, one of the things that stuck out to me was the eighth-grade Emerging Leaders Program that you're working on, and I know there's just a lot of excitement about DECA around, around the kids. So, anyway, you can even start that a little bit earlier, I think it's a great move, so, nice job.
Yeah, and having been a participant in the activities at Merrimack College that one year, just seeing how much your program has grown over the years compared to when we were in high school, it's just unbelievable how the whole school community has just taken aboard. Like you said, you have most of the students, I think, in the building, so I think it's very impressive that you can pull that in.
Congratulations on your, your performance and your experience. The one common thread I'm hearing tonight, whether they were talking about the drama in the public speaking class, is this experiential piece to learning, things that you really can't learn sitting in a classroom, but get out and do it. And, you know, I commend everybody for being open and confident to take that on, and congratulations.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your effort. You're correct, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight students, that's over a quarter of our students more, participate, and every time I walk by the classroom, it's always constant motion, activity, and I had the pleasure of being a practice judge, which I was very nervous, but they're just, just wonderful representative of our school community, and I agree in terms of being able to collaborate with our elementary students, providing positive role models for them as they come forward, and certainly offering real-world experiences that I think are outstanding and just really, really top-notch. So thank you very much for all that you do, and I know it's a lot, but it's also support. The nice thing, too, is it's support within our school community as well, and I, and I appreciate all the faculty, because it's balance, right? And I know you compete, but everybody makes it work because they know the importance of working together, and I think that epitomizes Danvers High School, and compliments to your program, and also to Principal Federico for his leadership of the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a presentation about Bubble Day. So Rebecca Khan and Eric Oxford, come forward, please, and this is a unique opportunity to provide an awesome community activity, and I'll turn it over. I have a couple slides, and just tell me when to turn them.
All right. Thank you, and good evening. I'm really excited to present Bubble Day. I'm Rebecca, I'm one of the speech pathologists in the district, and I've been supporting AAC. So this, Bubble Day is really a collaborative effort between Danvers Public Schools and Danvers Parks and Recreation. We're coming together to unveil the first communication board, which will be placed at Thorpe, and it'll be on Sunday, June ninth, between ten and twelve. So it'll serve to unveil that, and then also fundraise to place communication boards in all of the playgrounds in the Danvers Public Schools, as well as at Endicott Park, with the hopes of eventually getting boards placed in all of the playgrounds in Danvers. It's gonna, going to be a real child-centered event. It's going to be sensory-friendly, with sensory-friendly music, and a place to take a break if kids require that, and we'll have AAC represented, representation throughout the event. And a lot of different bubble activities, and just really a day of joy and inclusion for all families, and we really hope that all families feel welcome and safe to join.
Great. So as Rebecca mentioned, we really are hoping to make this event just community-wide. You know, it's certainly free and available to everyone and anyone who wants to come and join and have a good time, and enjoy bubbles while mourning. But we really wanted to bring this not just to the school district, but to the community at large, and really making sure that we can include as many stakeholders that wanna be a part of this event and this opportunity as possible. And so we are going to roll out, starting tomorrow after tonight's meeting, just opportunities for some sponsorships, for donations, just for participation and involvement from the community. And so, as part of why we wanted to come here tonight to share all of this with you, we're really excited, and kudos goes to Rebecca for really being one to spearhead, you know, all of this and this idea, and bringing this to fruition with Danvers Recreation, and certainly a shout out to DPW and CPAC, and there's a lot of stakeholders involved. So, so I'll pause there and see if there's, certainly if there's any questions. But again, it's really, the goal of these boards across the town is really to bring representation and that sense of acceptance and education, frankly, to all of our community members as well.
So my background, I work in one public schools, and I work with a sub-separate classroom with students on the autism spectrum, and this is my everyday, carrying the devices around. If they're out playing at the playground, then who wants to carry an iPad with them? So I, I think this is really an unbelievable step towards connecting children with the typical neurological children, that they need to be able to communicate with one another, you know, in the playing set, the play setting, rather than just in a classroom setting. So I appreciate your efforts.
Is there gonna be a foam? Creek, 'cause I just wanna let my kids know if...
Yes. No foam, although foam kind of inspired the bubble idea. Lots of bubbles, bubble pools, bubble houses, all, all things, bubble, bubble painting, but no foam, sorry.
Okay, it's okay.
Part of, as Rebecca mentioned, the bubble painting is really gonna be kind of one of our tiered structures of sponsorships, and for any businesses or family members, anyone, community members who wanted to donate, just a small portion. We are going to have a station where there will be bubble paint with just different signs, and we're hoping to have all of those signs say welcome, because we're all welcome, and having the kids participate on that day to, to create them, and whoever donates receives that sign back. And whether, you know, those organizations decide to put that in their window, or just wanna, you know, be inspired every day, you know, in some way, shape, or form, we're just really hoping to be able to shed that light and be able to, you know, when you walk in different places in Danvers, you see that, right? And it's just kind of that symbol and representation. So, yeah, I don't know, there's some type of foam, film that would be...
You said you're rolling this out tomorrow?
We're hoping to get the word out, I think, again...
And how, how are you gonna be doing that?
Yeah, great question. So we'll start with, with Dan's support. Certainly wanted to bring this to all of you with, with the school committee, you know, and we'll get all the information out to you all as well. We have a brochure, you know, that, again, that we partnered with Danvers Rack. We have kind of a one-pager around, you know, just rolling out, what are those tiered structures for donations or sponsorships look like, as well as just frequently asked questions, you know, what is a communication board at a playground? What's the purpose of that? You know, what is an AAC device? And I think, again, as Rebecca mentioned, and wanted to bring this to the community, it's, it's really empowering and educating our community on, on when they see, when students see, you know, an iPad in the classroom, what does that mean, you know, and being comfortable with all that. So Sean, I appreciate you bringing that out. So, you know, Mike, Mr. Shannon, just to bring that to you, Jen Corcino from CPAC, who spoke a little bit earlier, she, we met with her on Friday, and she's so excited. That's her world and jam to get out into the community and do that, and I think frankly, there's gonna be some, some door-to-door, you know, just going out and reaching out. So, we just wanna spread the word as much as we can, and with our PACs and CPACs and other organizations, just to help us out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask, is there like a GoFundMe or any online fundraising?
Yeah, so we also partner, partnered with PAC, and so we set up a website that included a QR code so that people can donate, and they can choose their tier, tiered sponsorship level, or they can do an open-ended donation.
Thank you.
This sounds great. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're gonna change the agenda up, and I know we have Performing Arts Update, but wanted to move them up, because we do have students here and families, but just wanted an opportunity, because we've been talking a lot about all of our programming throughout the year, and certainly doing the best that we can to suit and meet the needs of many students. And I want to applaud the students for coming out tonight, and I've seen the production, I saw Matilda, it was outstanding. In terms of my observations as a first-year superintendent, having the opportunity to see our performing arts in action is wonderful, and it is truly an honor to see our students see, you see them in a different way. And one bonus, I think, about performing arts in general, is an opportunity for everybody to do something. When you look at the actual theater piece, you know, whether you're the star performer or have a backup role, or if you're working backstage, crew, there's just many different ways to fit in. So, I think that's, there's a number of different things that set our school and our school district apart from others, and the performing arts is that. So I just wanna give a big shout out to all of our performers in our program. It's very strong, and I certainly understand, right now, you know, you know, certainly concern in terms of a class that we offer, not just separating the class, but the programming itself. But I just wanna assure the, the community that performing arts is very important to all of us, and it's important to me personally, and a number of different reasons. Not only being a parent that has students participate in performing arts, but also as an assistant, as a principal, and a superintendent, knowing that it's more than just, it's very important that we put everything together, but we are the sum of our many parts. And I know that education itself is experiential, and that leads its way to forming, I think, skills, and we saw just the DECA presentation, and those students provide, and they perform in a different way, and they also bring out the very best in all different activities. So, I think that's one thing that our school community does very well, is the balance, and we have kids involved in many different activities. So, with that being said, I did wanna turn this over. Mr. Alex Grover's gonna come up, and I know that we've been talking and working together, because as part of, you know, I'll talk about the entry plan and findings, just an update, and we'll have more of a formal entry plan review in the June meeting, but I know one area that we always look at is our programming, and it's one area of electives, and performing arts is a big piece of that. So, Mr. Grover, thank you for taking your time, and, and I have the slides ready for you whenever you're ready.
Great. Thank you so much for the introduction and the context for the importance of the performing arts here in Danvers, and in general, for our whole community. So, you can head into our slides. I think it's really important to think about and talk about the performing arts in the context of all the initiatives that we're doing here in Danvers, because they're all connected, and we're doing a good job collaborating with our staff from pre-K to twelve, and really looking at things methodically, so that we're not only addressing challenges in the short term, but we're seeing the big picture, and, you know, every decision that gets made, and all the work that we're doing together with staff and with students is done deliberately. And so that's why I put up on the, kind of subtitle to our, our presentation, is, is about strategy, collaboration, and, you know, you've heard a lot tonight, we are talking about the theater arts at this point. So if you wanna head into our overview, so, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on these first two, because number three is really what we're here to talk about tonight, but we do have some exciting things happening in our school district with the performing arts. And so just a little bit of background before I go into the three things. I'm the high school choral director, and I teach our choral classes up at the high school, but I've also been fortunate enough to work with some of the administration this year to, and have some flexibility to do some work from six to twelve, and even pre-K to twelve, to start the process of making this more holistic, energizing of the performing arts in Danvers. So, one of the things we're doing in twenty-four, twenty-five, we're creating a new private lessons program, so that's gonna be rolled out in June. We're gonna have five experts on their instruments, whether that's voice and piano, high brass, low brass, woodwinds, percussion, come and teach out of Danvers High School, and families will be able to register their student for lessons and pay through the school, and I think that's gonna be a great thing to invigorate our music program. The second thing is increased music and theater communication and alignment. This year, we've met twice pre-K to twelve with our performing arts staff, and I meet frequently with our six to twelve staff to start looking at all these initiatives, and as I referenced, that kind of long-term vision for what we're doing with the performing arts in Danvers. And part of that is also not only working with the staff in Danvers, but also working with the amazing parents who are part of our boosters organizations. We did a major restructuring of our boosters organization at the high school level that involves a focus on all of the areas that students are enthusiastic about, and that we have at Danvers High School, theater productions, music concert season, and marching activities. And we have over thirty-three parents officially involved in the boosters program as board members, never mind all the people that volunteer for all the events. So, we've really, we really are excited about that aspect of our, you know, communication and collaboration. But, this is the spotlight for tonight, our extracurricular theater arts programming at Holton Richmond and DHS. And I think, before we get into the details, it's, it's really important that we recognize how impressive it is for students and parents to get up here and advocate for something, and I know that that's in an advocacy for a reallocation of a class that got caught, right, in favor of something else. But tonight, I think it's important for this presentation that we're focusing on the extracurricular theater arts program, because as far as we know, that's how we're moving forward. And so, we're really excited about what the prospect of what's in front of us and all the opportunities that we have, and so that's what we're here to talk about. So if you wanna head on to the next slide, I thought it's, we could talk about both the levels, because the connection is important. So, at the high school this year, the Fall Musical was Little Women, and then our Drama Fest production was This is Not a Pipe Dream, and then our spring play was Two Acts. One was a thirty-minute play called Prom Apocalypse, and then we had a Broadway musical review. And the highlights of the high school theater program this year, we had a really great, new and dynamic team of directors, and we're excited about hopefully keeping that in place for next year. And our Drama Fest show, This is Not a Pipe Dream, advanced to the semifinals, receiving multiple awards at the preliminary round and semifinals. And as part of getting our students and our community excited about the next year, we're trying to get in the habit of announcing whatever the slate is of shows for the next year. So over the next month, we are gonna be announcing what the Fall Musical is, what the Drama Fest production is, and then what our plans are for our spring production at the high school. And so, I've brought a couple high school students here to just give some little tidbits about their experience with theater at the high school level. So here's Brooke and, Brooke Wachowski and Molly Emery.
Just as a side note, I was that kid that came to stuff in my baseball uniform, and I know it's a funny thing, but while I'm like on public record here, for all those directors and coaches that are listening out there, these kids really do get conflicted when they have con, like, when they have overlapping things, and they work so hard. So if any of you are listening, or even in the room out there, when somebody comes to you with a concern about, you know, what should I choose, try to just use reason when, when you're looking at a conflict, because I've seen far too much over my twelve years, just not, people not being rational, and it breaks my heart. And a lot of the time, it's the, the music that gets the short end of the stick, just because we're so tunnel-visioned as to, you know, that things should be a certain way. And so I just like... as to, you know, that things should be a certain way. And so I just like to say that because she's wearing her uniform, and she's just, she's a freshman on the varsity team. And I just think it's awesome, and so I wanted to say that. So yeah, you can go to the next slide.
Okay.
So they're going to talk about their experience in some of the productions.
Hi, I'm Molly Emery. I'm a senior at Danvers High School. Sad to say, I just had my last production with Danvers High School, but I think this is a perfect time for me to reflect on all the amazing things I've done with DHS acts. And one of them this year for me was the Drama Fest show. Drama Fest is a competitive competition between schools in the Northeast and across the whole country, who compete with 40-minute shows. And I got to be a part of Danvers's show, which was called This Is Not A Pipe Dream. And it was about a famous artist named Renee McGree, and we learned so many things from this show, not only improving our theater skills and public speaking, but also about this artist and art history, and even a little bit of French. There was a lot of lines that run French in this show. So I thought it was very interesting to get new cultural perspectives and learn so many new things from this Drama Fest show.
Hi, my name is Brooke Wachowski. I'm a freshman. This year, I was in the Fall Musical Little Women and the Broadway Musical Review. And one thing I found very interesting and fortunate to be a part of was the Broadway Musical Review. Not only did this widen my horizons to new musicals that I really enjoyed, but this also, the level of difficulty made me more passionate for it, being able to work outside and inside of the school, to just improve every day.
And I wanted to mention a little bit, there is for our extracurricular theater program. I'm a student who's involved in quite a few activities, so it's not always possible for me to be a cast member of the shows, especially regarding the fall. I play field hockey, so it's hard to kind of multitask those two activities. But I did get to be a part of the crew for the Little Women musical. The team of directors was super flexible and so kind to me, and they allowed me to join the crew kind of late in the season, but still enough that I got to participate in the shows and learn about the behind-the-scenes, so both perspectives of the shows. And the extracurricular theater program is so great about getting students involved in any way, whether that's, you know, directing, student directing, behind-the-scenes. There's so many different opportunities for students to learn different skills.
The Danvers Theater Experience is something that is very important to me. When I was in fourth grade, I was in my first high school musical, Les Mis, and then in eighth grade, I also was in the high school musical, Once on This Island. And being able to be involved in the performing arts at a younger age, I think, made my love for theater grow more, and it helped me be involved in more stuff. Who knows if I would still be in this program if I hadn't started when I was in fourth grade.
Thanks, Brooke and Molly. So next, we want to talk a little bit about what's going on at Holton Richmond, and I know you've heard a lot about that already. But we had the Winter Musical, Matilda, which was an amazing production. And I, when anybody asked me about the show, I just thought it was a great selection to be performed at the middle school level, and the kids really took to the content. And there were so many adults that were involved in, you know, making that, that production possible, and I enjoyed working with them. Then for Drama Fest, they did the Hallmarks of Horror. And the highlights for both of these are that, you know, they were both contemporary and energetic productions with significant student engagement from the sixth through eighth grade. And there was a lot of support behind the scenes from high school students as well. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later. And then they participated in the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild's Middle School Drama Festival, and received a gold medal and numerous individual awards. And so now we're going to bring up some students to talk about those experiences. So you can head on to the next slide.
Next slide.
So we have Brian Callahan, Julia Osgood, Teresa Gittard, Lily Tucker, Marley Bollier, and Hadley Bollier. And so now, we're going to bring our first two up to talk about their experience in Matilda.
I'm Lily Tucker. I'm in eighth grade, and I would like to talk about Matilda. Personally, Matilda, once you're on that stage or backstage, you're at rehearsal, it's like a whole new world of opportunities, and you meet so many new people that you basically classify, the stage is your home, backstage is your home, your peers are your family. And it gives you the opportunity to be bigger, be bolder. It lets you into a world of no judgment, people you can be weird around, you can be whatever you want. And it's, it's nice, because you can really, personally, I like to sing, but it's not one of my, it's not one of my biggest things I do, but I like to participate in the musicals, because I can be part of the ensemble too, and sing, not have a big part. Or I prefer acting instead of singing, and I got a small role of just speaking. And, you know, it was really nice, because it gave me the opportunity to be a different person, be a new character, and have a whole new personality. And it was really a wonderful experience and a great way to end off my grade year.
Okay. Hello. Hello, I'm Marley Bollier. I'm an eighth grader at HRMS. I was Miss Trenchwell in Matilda. I definitely look it out, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Matilda helps, like, me and everyone else in Matilda, like, gain, like, connections with people from, like, eighth grade and sixth grade. I'm friends with some sixth graders I would never have met if I didn't do Matilda. And it just, it gives us a chance to, like, get out there, gain confidence, and like, be able to speak in front of a crowd, like I am now. And it really helps the sixth graders transition into middle school, if they know someone who's already, like, done it all together. And if they, if they're ever worried, they can just go ask their peers. And I think Matilda let kids connect through this.
So now we have Julia, Brian, and Teresa coming up to talk about the Hallmarks of Horror for the Drama Fest entry.
Hello, I'm Teresa Gittard, and me, and these two other students are going to talk about the Hallmarks of Horror, and how kind of it impacted us, and the highlights of it. So I think that it helped a lot. I mean, it didn't really help, but it was very impacting, because you get to see other students that are from different schools, and you don't have to see, like, the same students from your schools. You get to see other people's perspectives on, like, stuff like theater. And you get to, like, meet new friends and see other people that are, like, more like you.
Hi, I'm Julia Osgood. I'm in sixth grade. I played Jane in Hallmarks of Horror. It was a fun experience, because we got to go and compete with kids who were like us, because they were theater kids, and they weren't just like everybody here, who liked different things. They liked the same thing as us. And I would definitely do it again, because it was a fun experience. And you would meet so many new kids, different perspectives, different plays. It was a very, very fun experience.
Hi, I'm Brian Callahan. I'm also in sixth grade, and I'm also here to talk about the Hallmarks of Horror. The Hallmarks of Horror was a really fun experience, because we got to see how other schools' perspectives on how, like, how they made, how they perform on stage. And we got to see how other, like, in Matilda, we didn't get to see other people perform musicals. It was just us in front of crowds. But the Hallmarks of Horror was really fun, because we had, it was an all-day event in Dedham, and we, there were kids like our age, and nobody could judge you, because it was, it was, we were all acting on stage. And it was, it was really fun, because people got to express themselves in front of other crowds. And it was also a little bit challenging, because we had to meet certain requirements. We had a certain time limit, and we had a certain timeline to set the stage and stuff. So that was parts of the challenging parts of the Hallmarks of Horror.
So now to end our HRMS student perspective, we're going to bring up Hadley, and then Lily and Brian again, just to kind of wrap it up. So Hadley, you can go first.
Hi, I'm Hadley. I'm in sixth grade. Before theater, I was going straight home, going on my phone, watching TV, and doing things that just wasn't great for, like, my learning and stuff. But ever since I started theater, I, since I found these people that I've connected with so much, and I relate to so much, they've shown me all these new hobbies. So now I go home, and I can paint, I can draw, and I can do all these new activities that I found from being with these people, who are now my besties.
Hi, I'm Brian Callahan. I'm also in sixth grade. And the after-school theater program is important, because it's people connecting with their peers, talking about, like, life. And it's not you're at home, eating junk food on your phone, iPad, TV, whatever. You're on stage, you're with your friends, you're talking, you're not, you're not wasting your time on the screens. And if, if I hadn't tried out for the musical, then I wouldn't have become the person I am now.
I'm back again. Like I said, it's a new world of opportunities. And, you know, I think it's important, because it keeps kids up and moving and active, and actively using their minds to think of creative ways to express themselves. And, you know, it's also, it's also a good thing to have the skill to be able to do, because not everyone can go up there and talk to a large crowd of people, and be loud, and be different. So it helps prepare these kids, specifically the ones who do theater, for future events like interviews and college interviews. And it helps a lot with their self-confidence. Personally, it boosted mine from pretty low to pretty high. You know, it's something that I think is very important for people to have the ability to do, and I think it's something everyone should try personally. So, yeah.
So to wrap it all up, I'll try to be concise with this last slide. But we have all this passion and this energy, and, you know, look at all the people that are here tonight in support of the theater arts. And so the question before us, all right, well, what are we going to do about this, with this challenge in front of us? And we put together some bullets that can be tangible examples and tangible ways forward for us to put some energy and time and resources into our performing arts program. So what are we going to do next year? We're going to create a kind, organized, and collaborative team at each of the middle school and high school levels for all of the productions. So all these positions are stipended positions. And to be honest with you, I've been here for 12 years. Not a lot of thought or, not a lot of thought or time is put into, you know, who actually is in those positions. And, you know, they're just small stipended positions, and they don't get treated like real positions. And because of the unique nature of the arts, they have to have that attention. And we've never really done that before, and there's never any, been any cohesion to who we're hiring in these positions. And so that's one of the first steps we've done at the high school. We want to keep it that way at the high school. And now we want to put some more energy into it at the middle school level for the after-school theater program. You know, and then we're going to look at our venues. We're going to do an analysis of, you know, where our students are performing, and what kinds of equipment and opportunities there are in each space. So we want to enhance the cast and crew experience for our students for all of the productions. I can't tell you exactly what that's going to look like at this moment, because, you know, it obviously involves money, it involves logistics, but that's something that's really important. And then on that same note, we want to prioritize extracurricular use of the DHS auditorium and NPR's rehearsal spaces for theater arts activities. You know, a lot of the time, you know, they rehearse on Mondays, and, you know, school committee meetings are here on Mondays, and they get set up early. But there's no reason why that the rehearsal can't happen on the stage while this is being set up here. And I think in the past, there hasn't always been that communication. And, you know, just because it's reserved on paper means you can't do it at all. So we're going to use a fine-tooth comb to really look at our spaces and try to get things booked in advance. And, you know, if it's a 15-person meeting that's happening in here that could happen, you know, somewhere else, the theater program should be rehearsing in here if there's 60 kids. And then the last one is something I alluded to earlier, which is developing a partnership between director teams from DHS to Holton Richmond, to create high school to middle school student mentorship and volunteer programming to enhance the organization process and continuity in the theater arts. That is already happening. It's just not necessarily happening in official capacity. And so we really want to look at, you know, putting those volunteer opportunities in place for high schoolers to come over to the middle school, assign certain roles, so that these new and dynamic teams of adults can have a support system to make the production and the experience as best that it can be. And so that's everything I have in what we're going to do moving forward. With every challenge and every crisis, there comes opportunity, and I think there's one here to leverage, looking at the after-school theater program, so that we can put some time and resources into it. Just as a side note, you know, besides the theater stipends for all of the productions at all the levels, there's no line item for theater expenses in the budget. It's just those adult stipends. And, you know, I get, it's curricular, obviously. I get a pretty nice budget for some of the expenses at the high school. But in terms of the big things that need to be done in these spaces, and the equipment that's necessary, there's nothing there in any official way. And everything is the hard work of the parent booster organizations to make this experience better. So I think in this whole situation, there are windows of hope for us to look at things a little bit more closely, so that we can give the theater arts the attention that it deserves. So thank you very much for all of your time.
Any comments? I just, I'd just like to thank everybody who has used their voice to step up in advocacy for performing arts. My last child, call him a child, is a senior at DHS, and has benefited from being in the performing arts and the band and in the crew. And I have benefited from not just watching him, but watching Molly Emery perform for many years since they were both Thorpe Tigers together. So, so I thank you. And by the way, Brooke, I just need to say, I saw you sing recently at the high school. And listening to you talk, I might be, you know, I may sound weird, but you sound like Kristin Chenoweth. And I swear to God, you're singing, you're on your way to singing. You're unbelievable. So keep, and all of you, please, stay with it. Don't give it up.
I'll just say, I'm a, I'm a big fan of the arts personally. Some of you may not, I'm an Emerson grad, Emerson College, big theater school, big communication school. I didn't have public speaking until I got to college. I never took an acting class in my life until I got to college. There's probably no doubt if I was exposed to it sooner. I don't know, maybe I'd be in Hollywood right now with, with a bunch of friends, maybe. But no, to, you know, Mr. Shannon's point, please stick with it. We're hearing great things about it, and it's always worth the conversation and a reevaluation of how we're creating, you know, more opportunities for our students. So thank you to all of you that spoke up.
If any, may Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We, I think all of us are pleased that there's a commitment to the after-school, no, art programs. no, art programs continuing. I think you can see there is a commitment to it on I have it on silent too, that's the funny thing. Anyway, I apologize. You can see there's a commitment to the after-school portion, the extracurricular art program and theater program and music, and we do some fantastic things. We've all seen the groups that Alex leads, we've all seen productions during the course of our time where we had kids in school or more recently. And we do some wonderful things. At the same time, we know we've had to make some hard choices when it came to the actual class. And we know that's why you're all here, the speech class and drama class at the middle school. And this has been an interesting and challenging budget year with a lot going on in terms of things that we had to prioritize. So I just want you to know that none of us take it lightly or easily in terms of the changes that we've had to make. But, and there may be a time in the future that we can go in a different direction too. And we should never assume that just because something happens in one year that it's forever. But I do, I just as one person was, all of the students who came up and spoke on all of the topics tonight have been extremely impressive. And we appreciate that and recognize what they have gotten out of the classes they've taken. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I mean, I also know it's getting pretty late and there's still a school day tomorrow, so if there's nothing else on the agenda for the students, they can feel free to go.
I just wanna say thank you, Marlee, for telling me to sit down at the performance. Well, whatever it was, it didn't matter because I sat right down. Thank you for that. And Brooke, I just wanna say that I was one of those students too. And I, you know, I'm glad you said that, Alex, because as a coach myself, but also as a high school, you know, not a very good musician, but it involved a lot of activities. You know, it shouldn't be about making choices. It's like, can we do both? Can we do three things? And I think that's the beauty of what we're setting up at the high school. I've seen, that's why I made that comment about DECA, but I'm so glad that you did come in your uniform because it just enriches everybody, right? Talent is everywhere. So I appreciate you coming in, and I hope that nobody has to make choices like that because we would never put a kid in the middle. You never wanna do that because it should be about opportunity and working together, and we can always find ways. So again, thank you. And I thought you did a great job in the fall performance. I can't believe you're a freshman.
Like I said, if there's nothing else, please go get some rest, finish your homework. Thank you for coming. Okay.
That's the face.
That'll work. It'll get me to sit down. I can't say.
Okay, on to new business. Apologize.
Alright, so I'll move through this. The superintendent evaluation update really is just kinda where we're at, that we know that my evaluation will be at the next public meeting. And again, the decision was made to have this timeline. I know we talked in the future if indeed it has to be this timeline because it's a little awkward with new members coming aboard. So the evaluation just will be with the members that were this year, but I'll share all the information so you have that transparency. And it's something we could talk about at a retreat, moving the timeline, so it doesn't fall right after an election. So we can talk a little bit about that. So I will make sure that you have the summative evaluation forms. I'll also make sure that the end of year report will come to you. That will be basically, I'll have that by May 20th, so you have an opportunity to review that before the 10th of June. So it'll be progress on my three goals and the four standards. And just quickly, the three goals, the progress is there, almost completed with the entry plan, so my presentation in June will be the findings. Right now, I'm about 25 pages on that. I'm trying to narrow it down, and I'll talk a little bit about that. In terms of the momentum, I've done the visit to schools, but that's been fantastic, right? And I'd love for any of you to join us on these visits too. Goal-setting with the admin team, we did formative evaluations, and next up the summative at the end of the year. So that's part of maintaining the momentum. And the last one is the induction program. So tomorrow's my last class. I go once a month, like, and it's been great, and I work with my coach on a regular basis. So I'll give the update on those goals. And then moving forward on the four standards of instruction, leadership, management, operations, family community engagement, professional culture, I'll highlight bullet points and I'll provide evidence so you can review that information, and then you'll have the evaluation forms and then discuss it publicly on the 10th. And I'll share all that information with both you, Mr. Shannon and Mr. Dory. So entry plan findings, I will have the full complete one for the school committee on the 10th that actually dovetails with the evaluation. And I will share that with the community. I'll probably give you a copy of that earlier for school committee because that will weigh in for the eval just to see, you know, the progress that was made. But the entry plan was something that was created last year as I came aboard, and really just the way to ensure a smooth and orderly transition into the superintendent role, but also an opportunity to gain knowledge about our schools and community. And then walk away at the end of the year with an evaluation that just shows like, you know, the strengths and areas of growth and really dovetail into a strategic plan. Our strategic plan needs to be updated. So the first goal really is to ensure that, you know, we have the entry plan, which I'm working through, and then provide the actual findings, which I don't think there'll be any surprises, but that's a lot of data. And then actually what direction that means the strategic plan. And then two really is to create a structure to listen broadly so to visit the schools, go to as many events as possible, establish meetings. And that is a great way to create that and attend meetings too. And then actually the multiple perspectives, I just put down just a listing of the visits because that really allows the chance to meet the students and staff and really see what's happening. But we did coffees in the beginning of the year, meet with the PACs, attend at that, we've created a central PAC meeting, which has been great. Meeting with school-based groups, met with students, the H R I C and CPAC, as you saw tonight and working with them. The wellness advisory committee are in the last meeting is this Thursday, but also Danvers Cares Deep Rotary and Lions Club, and I'm looking to expand that just to get out as much as possible. And really the work in relationships, it's important because we are connected with all the various entities in the community, our school committee relationship. But town management select board, that's critical, the DPW, which manages and oversees our buildings and facilities, the police, the fire, as well as the human rights inclusion, recreation department, YMCA, and other school groups. Just so that we all work together because the schools really reflect our community, and it's important that everybody works together to support us. So that'll be in there as well. And then just the documents, which is taking a long time, everything from our N E S report for the high school, which we presented, all the data on performance and expectations, and everything down that you can read about that. I'm trying to crunch down and just provide information that can show at the end of the day some themes that are emerging. So really, there's a number of themes and really expectations and achievement, you know, where are our students and staff in terms of their expectations, and also be able to provide from the reports, recommendations. Because that's gonna guide us to our next step. Sense of belonging, where is that in our district? Our communications and messaging with the community. And also in there should be consistency from central office and working together. School safety, student services, and budget and operations, those are all themes that have popped up not only with the analyzing the data from all the documents, but also through a lot of feedback from the community. So at the end of the day, here's an action plan that would come out of this and recommendations. So I just use student services. We've done a lot of work with that this year. Just because the timing and the necessity of the needs of our community. But really, we changed and created a plan for improving specialized programming. We presented to the town, and that was a goal that was created. I think that was hugely helpful because that tied into budget, and then also looking for a way that we can help students from going out district if we can provide programming in district, right? Restructure the leadership, which I appreciate the school's committee support, which we've done that. But also pre-K audit, which has been fantastic and has allowed us to build that great program. And we're also have moved our specialized programmings for next year, but that's taking a lot of collaboration, but also a way we can reallocate resources to maximize. And then I'm proposing we'll do a special education audit. We're ripe for that. We have a new director. We found a great consultant that can provide a detailed plan, which I'll report out to the school committee. But those would be recommendations of an action plan just coming out of, you know, the entry plan. That's just one strand of that. So again, when we launch the strategic plan, you know, I'll have the group we're working with come in and talk with school committee. But that's gonna be a long process, you know, just getting it off the ground, trying to find various stakeholders that will work to provide and create that vision, and we'll work from there. So that is really what I had for the entry plan, so I'll make sure you get an advanced copy to help with the evaluation. And obviously I'll release that to the public and present it at the 10th. So I'm open for any questions. That's it for my update. Thanks for allowing so much time tonight.
Just one quick question on the, when we get the rubric, will we get the rubric at the next meeting?
No, you'll have the rubric and everything by Monday.
By Monday.
So you'll have my report and the rubric, so that gives you time to go through that. And I'm open to coming in for individual meetings if you wish to sit down, and obviously I'll have the supporting, like, for the teachers, we have them put together their evidence. I have a similar portfolio for your review. And I'm open for any meetings during that time if you wanna sit down, if you have any questions or clarification about any of the evidence and strands. Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question, Mr. Chair, and I mean quick. On the, I was just gonna wait for the, to get the plan to really dig into it, but on the sped audit, it made me just wonder where we are on the cycle for the state to come in and do a full audit. Mary, I don't know if you know, or Dan?
Coordinated program review?
Yes, exactly.
Yes. That's the last piece?
Yeah, I feel like that was done two years ago.
Okay.
Because there was a number of corrective actions that went into place.
We did well on that.
Right.
On that, we went through that, and then we also went through an ESL.
Okay, but do we know how often they come in to do that? I'm just thinking of the coordination.
Every six years.
Oh, okay, we got plenty of time. Okay.
But there was corrective action that we took, just to give you, give a little bit of time, and Mary actually led this because we did find some discrepancies with discipline data.
Okay.
And Mary dove in deep, and we actually went through and reviewed the data to show some points that we need to review as an admin team and take corrective action steps. We saw disparity with students of color and other ethnicities in terms of the rate of discipline data. And we've been working with our admin team and working on that, and we, Mary actually prepared the plan and sent it in. And she did a nice job with their admin team. That was just, that's one piece that would come out of a coordinated program review.
Great, thank you.
And what everybody's looking forward to, the last day of school, the official last day of school will be Monday, June 17th. We only utilize one snow day this year, and the last day of June 17th will be a half-day for all schools. So I don't think that's any surprise, but I know we have that in our meeting to celebrate and, you know, knock on wood, there's no more snow. We should be good.
I think that's evacuation day, which is.
That's all I have.
Alright, well, thank you. Onto new business. Am I asking for a motion on school choice hearing?
Okay, so first, I would move that we open the public hearing on school choice. We need a second. Alright, and a vote on that.
Okay. Any comments on that?
I'm happy to provide if you like.
Okay, we need a vote to open the public hearing. We've got a motion, we have a second.
And all those in favor of opening the meeting to public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, I would ask, if it were me, I would ask the superintendent if he has a recommendation on the school choice.
Superintendent, recommendation on school choices? I do, and certainly, as we know, a lot of change is happening this year. And school choice can offer a lot of different opportunities. However, I feel at this time, with just the amount of reallocation and resources and such, that I would move this year to say no on the participation, because we do need to provide the state by June 1st our decision. If not by June 1st, that's why we're having the hearing tonight, then they'll assume that we are open for school choice and that we're problematic at this time. My feeling is that I am more than happy to review school choice over the summer and the fall. I would outreach, do outreach to participating districts, and sit down and look at the pros and cons. So that way I can come back to the school committee with a recommendation that would be probably before budget season. I think it's just really important because we have a lot of stressors with a lot of moving parts. Everything from the class sizes at the elementary school, the EA program that we're working through, and certainly the specialized programming. So I really wanna take the time to do a cost analysis because there is a cost in terms of receiving students in, but also understanding that parents can send students out at any time. So we obviously set aside money just for that. But really, what are the targeted grades for school choice? That's important if we go that route. What resources, special education implications, and then once the students enroll, it's our obligation to educate throughout their educational career. So just wanna make sure I present all that information to the school committee and do our due diligence with this because it is a big decision. And I just feel again that, you know, there's a whole piece of the enrollment process, the lottery requirements, and certainly all the different things that you can find with siblings that attend school with that, transportation, which we do not have to provide. I just feel there's just so many factors toward the end of the year. I think it's in our best interest to say no at this time and come back and provide an opportunity, and I'll share that information with the school committee in the fall to set us up when we get into budget season.
Mr. Chair, since there's no one from the public here, unless way back there, no? Okay. If that's the case, then I would move to close the public hearing portion of this.
Okay, second. And now we, all those in favor of closing the public session?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all ayes.
I will move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation that Danvers does not accept school choice for this school year, coming school year.
And we'll go to a vote, all those in favor? Of accepting the superintendent's request? Aye as well, no opposition? That passes. Am I opening a public comment on security camera?
No, the policy doesn't require a public hearing.
Okay. Next up is security camera policy for a first reading. So you had a motion?
Superintendent, recommendation?
Yes, yes, I did distribute this before the meeting. It is in your folder in terms of the recommendation for first reading of the security camera. So this came about, we discussed it in our policy subcommittee meeting. And the key points to this for the first reading is just that we need a policy in terms of the security cameras that schools have. So we consulted with our attorney, provided, so there's an actual draft in your folder, and these are the highlight points. I think it's critical that with security cameras, it's important who controls the cameras, who disseminates the information. Obviously, our partnership with law enforcement is necessary to provide that, but it's really key, important for us for a liability piece that we're very, we delineate that in the policy. So the policy that's shared with you in your folder is common. It's, I think, Hoppington, Masconomet, and Marblehead have a similar policy, so it's pretty stock. And that's there for your review, so I'd recommend for a first reading, the school committee to accept for this first reading, security camera and school policy.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the the security camera policy for first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well, no opposition? Next up on the agenda?
So I would make a recommendation, Mr. Chair, to, for first reading request for our bullying prevention and intervention policy. We are currently in need of updating, which schools will do every two years. Ours needs to be updated, so I've been working with Attorney Joyce. And he provided an updated policy, which is in your Google Drive as well. It's a comprehensive, it's 13 pages. And the highlight piece within this is updating leadership, professional development, as well as access to resources and services, the academic and non-academic activities, which just falls with under, policies and procedures for reporting and responding to bullying retaliation, collaboration with families, prohibition against bullying retaliation definitions, and relationships to other laws. So what he did was provide wordsmithing to update with the current laws that reflect that. So fundamentally, the sections remain the same because there's always a piece of like, what is this? How do we as schools train and provide professional development and then inform the public about our policy? So this is updated, but I do wanna say that there is a piece of the requirement at the bottom. And I will send an update out to the community because there is something that has for a procedural purpose. So as you update your bullying and prevention policy, you have to inform the public. So if there's any feedback from any support, any person connected with the schools or community members, the list is there in the bottom. They have to have an opportunity, so there has to be a notice, so I'd send a notice out. An opportunity for public comment, provide a comment, you know, during this time. An opportunity for public comment, to provide a comment, you know, during this time for families that have a child attending the school as well. And again, the policy and plan should be updated every two years. So we've worked with Attorney Joyce, so you have in your folder that piece. We've also updated since 2019, we have done a number of different things in terms of our educational programming against bullying and harassment. And that's really, really important. So I would recommend for first reading, this policy itself, the update, and obviously offer an opportunity, public comment at our next meeting and then hopefully bring it back for a second reading. Thank you, Chair.
Motion to accept this as a first reading, the bullying prevention and interventional plan?
Second.
Before voting, you need to comment.
Any comments? Any comments or discussions?
From the school committee.
From the school committee? From the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? And is the last item one we've already done?
Yes, the recommendation for the school attorney.
So we already addressed that earlier? When does that contract, is that a yearly contract with the attorney?
It's a yearly reappointment. We don't have a written, I don't believe we have, we may have a fee agreement, but we don't have a contract per se, I don't think, with the school attorney.
Okay, on to order of business, the consent agenda, motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request?
Motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request.
Any comments?
This is the trip to France, I think, for the D-Day. Do they need five more chaperones?
Yeah.
I volunteered as well.
I looked at that itinerary and I saw nothing but the desserts. So I could never vote against anyone having a creme rouleau in France.
Okay, then we're commentary. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, no opposed? And then, subcommittee liaison updates. I don't have, do we have anything from deep?
We do have something for deep, very important event that you were invited to, Mary?
Yes, we have the Deep Hall of Honor breakfasts coming up in May thirty-first, I think, or thirtieth. Thank you, in the morning, from eight-thirty to, sorry, till ten. And they're honoring a couple of Danvers High people, so they'll be announcing that at the breakfast.
Okay, retirees as well?
Yes, and then it's also a time, thanks, Dan. It's also a time that we celebrate all our retirees. We have several of retirees gonna be at the breakfast.
And that's at Danvers High School, right?
Danvers High School in the atrium.
What time is that at, Mary?
Eight-thirty.
Thank you. Eight-thirty to ten, pancakes, right? All right, do we have anything from curriculum and equity?
We have not met, because the members of the subcommittee cannot, no longer with us.
Okay, all right. Nothing from policy?
Nope, just those two policies tonight.
Okay. CPAC?
No update other than what came tonight.
Safety?
Yes, we met on the twenty-ninth and basically, just so you know, that we're going forward, and this will be in the report, the InformaCast, which is an opportunity for us to communicate quickly if there is a crisis, the threat assessment team, which was forming and will have that in place for next year. I'm doing a survey to the committee for feedback for meeting efficiency. We're in the middle of our safety drills and great collaboration with the fire department, the police department, as well as the bus safety. And we'll start planning for the start of the school year for safety, professional development. So a lot, a lot of things accomplished this year from the safety committee. So we'll be looking for a liaison for that as well.
All right. Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion, outside of the update today?
Yeah, we saw the update. The only other thing of interest will be, they'll be picking a new chairman, since Dee was elected to the Board of Selectmen. So they'll be looking for a new chairman of that committee.
Wow, that's gonna be a job.
It is.
And there's nothing else here? Looks like our next meeting will be June tenth. It will be in person. And outside of that, I think we're ready to close.
Great, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there a vote on that, too?
Yes, yes.
You would think I voted on it all the time. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Good night, Danvers.